I'd like to call the Tuesday, October tenth, two thousand and twenty-three Alexander County Board of Education to make a meeting to order. At this time, I would like to recognize a couple of students from Wittenburg, Jaden Miller and Samuel Holcomb, if they would to come up to lead us in our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Board members, you have your agenda in front of you. What's the pleasure of the board for the adoption of the agenda?
Second.
I heard a motion by Board Member Agüez, second by Board Member Reese. Any discussion? All those in favor of the approval of the agenda say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the agenda is approved. At this time, I'd like to recognize Dr. Jennifer Hefner, our superintendent for our honors and recognitions portion.
Thank you, Chairman Robinson. Thank you, Vice Chairman Agüez and board members. I would ask that Matt Reese and Bridget Ryan, if you'll assist me with the next recognitions, that would be great. Thank you. Well, I am so excited about a lot of things. First of all, we have some honors and recognitions on the agenda tonight, but also we start back with a full bang with our first school report from Wittenburg. So it just makes me feel more normal when we have those things on our agenda. I want to first start by thanking some rock stars. I hold them to the standard of rock stars. I would like for Jordan Dagenhart, Danielle Stocks, and Michelle Sullivan to come forward. They are the rock stars making a difference in the chorus programs at the two middle schools and the high school. So if you would please, everybody, give them a round of applause. And secondly, I want to congratulate some of our students for the prestigious choirs they have been selected to participate in as a result of some auditions that were held recently. I'm going to start with high school students from Alexander Central. The North Carolina High School's Honors Chorus is the most prestigious choir that a high school student can be selected for in North Carolina. Out of more than one thousand students that auditioned, only one hundred seventy-seven were selected statewide. After many weeks of preparation, including staying after school, practicing during their flex, and practicing at home, we are pleased to report that all four of the AC students scored high enough to be a privileged member of this choir. We are so proud of all of you, and I would like to extend congratulations and ask that you come forward. I'm going to start with Judah Cole. Judah is a junior. I almost said senior. I almost had you in your last year. Round of applause. Khalil Voss, sophomore. Raken Dagenhart, freshman. And last, Carter Payne, also a freshman. Mr. Lael, now, I don't know, are they centered?
They're not.
You know that's big, pictures at the board.
I'm so great about that.
If you'll stay right there. Another round of applause. Wonderful, wonderful. We will have everybody come back up for a group picture, so grab a seat, but we'll have you back up again, okay? Also, several of our middle school students auditioned for the Middle School Honors Chorus. Trialts were held against students from thirty-six other counties in western North Carolina. Like the high school, the North Carolina Middle School's Honors Chorus, Honors Chorus, excuse me, is the most prestigious choir a middle school student can be selected in in North Carolina. I will start by recognizing middle school students from East Alexander. Please join me in congratulating Hannah Chapman, Jackson Kerrigan, and Charlie Safrat. And Mr. Dagenhart. Oh, you're there. You're already there. Look at you, looking all dapper. Fantastic. Okay, Mr. Huffman, it's your responsibility to line them up appropriately. There we go, and now slide to the right. Slide to the right a little bit. There we go. Woo-hoo, another round of applause. One student was chosen for this prestigious group. Congratulations to a very talented young man, Parker Payne. You are. That is wonderful. But we needed to see Mr. Tomlin. We need to see him sweat about that picture. Okay, wait just a minute. Wait just a minute for the paper. Another round of applause. And now I would like for all of the students, high school and middle schools, come up with your chorus instructors. Wait just a moment. We're so excited and just so proud. Congratulations, everybody.
Congratulations, students. Thank you, teachers, for the time you put into that, and parents, thank you for the time y'all take to get them to concerts and after-school and evening events that they take part in. Thank you. We've reached a portion of our agenda now for public comment. If we have any guests that's wishing to step out, now's the time you can step out. You're welcome to stay. We know that a lot of people have a lot of stuff going on.
Thank you all.
Thank y'all.
Thank y'all.
Thank y'all.
Good job, Ray. Mr. Campbell. Okay. All right, we do have one person sign up for public comment tonight. I'm going to read the public comment board procedures first of all, and then I'll call this individual up. Number one, each person signed up to speak will have three minutes to make his or her remarks. Each person signed up to speak will only be entitled to the time allotted to them, and the time may not be relinquished to another speaker. Number two, only one spokesperson will be allowed to speak for a group of individuals wishing to address the board on the same issue. Number three, speakers will be acknowledged by the board chairman in the order in which their names appear on the sign-up sheet. Speakers will address the board from the front of the room and begin their remarks by stating their names. Comments that are deemed obscene, profane, or personal attacks on a board member or school employee will be caused for ending of a particular speaker's time as determined by the board chairperson. Persistence in such remarks by an individual shall terminate that person's privilege to address the board. Number four, the public comment to the board period is not intended to require the board to answer impromptu questions. Speakers will address all comments to the board as a whole and not one individual member of the board. Discussion between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. Number five, speakers will refrain from discussion of any of the following items which are closed-session matters, including but not limited to attorney-client privilege, anticipated or pending litigation, property acquisitions or liquidations, or complaints about specific employees and students in open session. This is in accordance with General Statute one-one-five C dash three-two-one and the Open Meeting laws, which protects students and employees' records. Number six, speakers will be courteous in their language and their presentations. At this time, I will call Grant Sizemore to the podium. Grant's topic is sharing student concerns about budget reform and the possible elimination of AP curriculum, CTE arts, and foreign language courses. Mr. Sizemore, you got the timer on the screen, and it's all yours.
Greetings. My name is Grant Sizemore. I am currently a senior at Alexander Central High School. I've been privileged to represent Alexander Central as student body president this year. I transferred to Alexander Central my freshman year, and I'm so proud of the amazing opportunities that I have received at ACHS. From the day that I stepped foot in the front office for the first time, I have always felt welcome and at home. They offered classes that mattered and challenged me. Tonight, I'm speaking on behalf of myself, but I believe that a large majority of our student body would agree with what I'm about to say. You, as board members, are tasked with a very difficult and important decision to reform the budget crisis. Speculations are beginning to arise that will redirect the trajectory of Alexander Central High School, and some suggestions are to eliminate AP classes, CTE, the arts, and foreign language. The AP curriculum provides distinction and higher rigor to prepare students for college and beyond. Not only is learning accelerated, but you can also earn college credit and be immersed in classroom discussions, writing, and labs on a college level. Working as an intern for the CTE department has taught me the importance of our school offering a diverse selection of curriculums for our interests. I'm beyond happy to be an intern in a setting that is motivating for me and continues to challenge me. I have learned about the work environment, management, and creating accessible social media content. As a society, the arts are essential for shaping our morals and values. I have always been a creative person because of my family background and the theater. People naturally tell stories every single day, and the arts allow people to express themselves. As a choral student, I have broadened my abilities in musical theater and hope to one day pursue this after high school. The Foreign Language Department benefits a student by creating an open-minded thinker. Our world is built on different cultures and groups of people. Learning to appreciate and communicate better with these individuals around us will better motivate how we can live together as humans. I'm taking Spanish four currently because I want to continue expanding my understanding of our world on a global scale. AP, CTE, arts, and foreign language cannot be cut. The question we are all asking is what steps are you going to reform the budget while continuing to offer these essential programs for students? Thank you so much, and have a wonderful day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Board members, you have your consent agenda in front of you. What's the pleasure of the board for adoption of consent agenda?
Motion approved.
Second, I had a motion by Board Member Klein, second Board Member Dagenhart. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the consent agenda is approved. All right, this time I would like to recognize Shannon Denson. I hope I got that right. Dennison, I'm sorry. CPA with Anderson Smith &amp; White P L L C for our auditor's report for a year ended in June the thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Good evening, Chairman, Board Members. Dr. Hefner, I'm excited to be here tonight to present your two thousand and twenty-three audit. This is an audit of financial statements. We also review several other items in addition to just the financial statement. So it's a representation of all of the hard work that's being done across Alexander County schools. I'm pleased to announce that I'm going to go through a PowerPoint that kind of highlights many of the items. You all have a bound set of segments as well as a letter separately. If you have any questions on anything that I don't go over, feel free to reach out and happy to answer any questions this evening, or if any questions arise later, I'm happy to answer those as well. So I'm pleased to announce that you have an unmodified opinion on your audit. That's a clean opinion, the best opinion that you can receive on a financial statement audit. So congratulations on that opinion. And the letter separate to the financial statements is a required communication letter for any audit. It's a letter you'd receive every year. It's a result of Enron way back, and so every audit is issued with a required communication letter. On that letter, it goes over significant accounting estimates. The accounting estimates that we had on your audit are the same that we would have across the eighty school districts that we audit in North Carolina, so no changes. It's very customary estimates that we had, no identified misstatements, and we had no difficulties or disagreements with management. There's quite a few documents that we request, and Sharon and her team and the other departments put together. We received all the documents that we requested and all the cooperation of any questions that we had of them. So now to look at your fund balance and the change in what money that you spent last year. In your general fund, you spent two hundred and twelve thousand, two hundred and thirteen thousand dollars of your fund balance, ending your fund balance right about one point nine million dollars. Then, in your capital outlay fund, you spent about one hundred and ninety-one thousand, ending about one hundred and one point six seven million dollars in your capital outlay fund balance to be used on capital projects throughout the district. Your state and federal funds do not have a fund balance. You have to use those in the year. On the state funds, federal grant funds can roll over multiple years, but you report what you used during the current year. And your other special revenue fund, you saved five hundred and eighty-seven thousand to end at two point four million dollars. That fund is primarily specific grants that you're given. A lot of that is going to be some Medicaid reimbursement funds that have to be used specifically for EC kiddos in the district. And so much of that fund is grant-based and restricted as to how it's able to be used. And in your general fund, you had, the biggest thing that we look at is the unassigned fund balance. That's going to be one point five million dollars. As you anticipated, about three hundred and twenty-five thousand to be appropriated in this year's budget. That's an estimate since the state just came out with the budget. The funds have not rolled down to the school districts yet from the Department of Public Instruction, so it's very difficult to build the budget, as you know, the bulk of your funding comes from the state. So with the delay in the state, it delays your ability to be able to project and issue a two thousand and twenty-four budget. So as we talk about budgets, your original budget that you passed was amended throughout the year, and I'm pleased to report that with those amendments, your final budget, you had no expenditures that exceeded the budget that you all approved, that the district stayed within budget on every item. Then for child nutrition and community schools, your after-school program, we look at that a little bit different because it's on a different basis of accounting. So we look at that, and we recommend looking to see how the program financially performed on a cash basis and looking at the change in cash from June thirtieth. As you know, the kids are no longer in school as of June thirtieth, so it's a really good indicator because there's not a lot of moving, nearly as many moving parts at June thirtieth. So your cash decreased two hundred and twenty-one thousand in your child nutrition fund to about seven hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. That is something that we're seeing across the state. It's very uncommon this past year to have added fund balance. We're seeing that going down during the years of COVID. The reimbursement rate was higher. The kids had free meals, so there was more money coming into the fund. And so this year, we found this kind of a rebalancing to what that looks like post-COVID with both the increase in salaries up to the fifteen dollars an hour as well as the increase in inflation in food costs that everybody's experiencing, including your school food service fund. Your after-school program, community schools, increased their cash about seventeen thousand dollars, so relatively neutral when you're talking about their budget as a whole. They had about three hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars in cash remaining in the after-school programs. So in addition to the opinion that we give on the statements, we also, we have three additional letters of items that we look at. We look to see if there's any findings. So I'm pleased to report that there are no financial statements, no federal findings. And for our federal programs this year, every year we dig deep into different programs. Some programs will do multiple years in a row. They end up being on a rotation basis. But this year, we dug deep into special education as well as the ESSR money, the Education Stabilization Fund, all that COVID money that came in to the district. And then state, we had no findings as well. We looked at the State Public School Fund, which is the big block grant that the state provides the district, as well as the Needs-Based Capital Fund for the capital funding that you all have received. Excellent job on that. So in addition to the audit, I put together a little bit of information to kind of put some of this in context. So revenue over time, your state revenue is going to be the bottom gold section. Relatively constant slight increases. Most of that's going to be salary-based as the raises go up, looking from two thousand and sixteen to two thousand and twenty-three as the states raised salaries. Much of that is going to be related to that. Your federal is going to be the next blue box, which I think is kind of the significant one to be looking at now, and we'll dive a little bit deeper into pieces of that one. Much of that's going to be the COVID funds that you have received, the ESSR money and a few other grants related to COVID. You'll see as that increased in two thousand and twenty-one, significantly increased in two thousand and twenty-two, still larger than average in two thousand and twenty-three, and that's going to continue to kind of tier down from the rate that it was in two thousand and twenty-two. County money, that's going to be your general fund, general as well as capital, all the funds provided by the county. Again, relatively constant. An other is going to be various grants that have come in, donations, any other funding sources that you all receive reimbursements and whatnot. So looking specifically to the COVID revenue, it did peak in two thousand and twenty-two with about six million dollars in spending. Two thousand and twenty-three spent about five million dollars. As you go into two thousand and twenty-four, the last real full year of being able to utilize those funds, you'll be able to utilize the remainder of your funds, and then kind of this time next year, as that's really tapered out, keeping an eye on what does that look like and the programs that you all have put into place. And just kind of reiterating, I'm sure the conversations that you all have been having is the cost of everything in two thousand and nineteen, pre-COVID, the same cost is significantly higher. You know, as the state gives raises, you don't get extra federal money. You don't get extra state money to go with that. And same with the cost of everything in general, the inflation and whatnot, that some of that has gotten kind of buried in this excess revenue that as you come out, being able to plan now, and the more that you're able to plan. And you guys have done a good job at being able to save some of that grant money to be able to continue. Then looking at your fund balance over time, again, two thousand and sixteen, you can see a real distinct curve looking at your general. You had a little over four million dollars in fund balance. It went down. Then you can see into twenty-one, it's increasing, and then twenty-two, twenty-three. So keeping an eye on that fund balance and what you're able to have, that's basically your fund balance is what you would personally look at as your savings account. And for any, you know, emergency, anything that you guys decide that you feel is really impactful to the students that you want or need to do, that's where your fund balance helps kind of ease. You don't necessarily want to put reoccurring expenses in there, but for one-time expenses, that's what that's for. And your capital outlay fund balance is shown as well. That is all I have. Do you have any questions?
Any questions? Thank you for the time put into this. Appreciate the support.
Absolutely. The district's done an excellent job, so should be commended. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to recognize Ms. Melinda Glenn, principal at Wittenburg. At this time, I'd like to recognize Ms. Melinda Glenn, Principal at Wittenburg Elementary School for our Wittenburg Elementary School update.
Thank you. Um, I am honored to represent the students and staff of Wittenburg Elementary School. Although I will say that I tried really hard to get Grant to come up here and give my presentation because I thought he could've done a fabulous job. Um, you all, I I saw you kind of waving some of your bracelets. Um, every day at Wittenburg is an adventure and we want our students to feel like it's an adventure, an adventure of learning, an adventure of new opportunities. And that's really kind of our focus this year. So when our students came in for open house, everyone was given an Adventure Awaits bracelet that recognizes that they're a Wittenburg student this school year. So we just wanted to share that with you. Our our biggest affirmation this year is that we are a C school. When the schools get report uh, uh, grades, last year we were D. Um, and we had the designation of low performing. And I will tell you that in all my years at Wittenburg with Mary Brown and since, Wittenburg has never been a low-performing school. That is not who we are, that is not who our students are. And they worked really hard last year, just continual effort to lose that designation. So we were very proud. Holy cow, we're a C. That was just wonderful. We did retain retain our TSI rating, which means that our EC students are not performing at the level that they want to, which is really where everybody else is. Um, but they grew four points this past year, which is exceeding growth for those students. So we're very proud of that as well. And that really goes back to our um, EC, EC staff and students as well as our regular classroom teachers because those students belong in both, both groups of students. Our um, staffing really did not change a whole lot this year. We were grateful to be able to retain fifteen home room teachers and we were able to put one of those into our fifth grade group. So that stopped a combination, so that that group of students had three full classrooms, which helps lower class size. And for that group, that was very significant. So we were grateful for that. Um, we do have three EC teachers. That includes speech, um, a special behavior classroom in our school and then our regular um, exceptional children's teacher, Ms. Little. And I will say that as grateful as we are for our teachers, I will never say that we have enough of our other staff. These folks are just crucial to our school. We do have five teacher assistants and EC teacher assistant this year, full-time substitute, six bus drivers, we're blessed. And a custodian and a half, we got that half position filled this year, and then three people in our child nutrition staff. And they're crucial to our school. You can see our fourth grade is celebrating National Custodians uh, week, this past week. And we just appreciate all they do for us. Those teacher assistants especially um, are crucial. Without them, we can't run small groups. Our students don't have the individual, individual education that they really need. So those folks are just crucial and we are thankful for them. This year as a school, we really have um, a a focus on three Es. The first is engagement. If we want our students to learn, they have, our students and staff all have to be engaged in learning. So we're really talking right now about what does that look like? What does it mean to be engaged? How do, how do we know when we walk through a classroom if students are engaged, if the teachers are engaged? And a bigger part of that for us is attendance. If they're not there, then they can't be engaged. Last year, Wittenburg's attendance was kind of sad. It was ninety-one percent. And our our state goal, our county goal is ninety-five percent. So we are really focused on that this year and so far, we're only in the first month too, but we're at ninety-five percent. We have a lot of um, incentive and focus on attendance, including daily check-ins for students who've already missed ten percent of the school year. So that's four days of absence. That doesn't sound like a whole lot, but if they've already missed four days and they continue that trend, then they're not gonna learn what they need to because they're not in the building. So we do have people who are in the front hall as students enter and we are checking off certain names to make sure they're there. And if they're not, by eight-thirty in the morning, either I or somebody in my office staff has already reached out to the parents. Are they sick? Is everything okay? Just to show that we care and we miss them. So we're hoping that that continues to make a a big difference for us. The second E, sorry. The second E is effectiveness, because we want our students and staff to be engaged, but what they do with students has to be effective. So our s- our teachers are really working hard with CFAs. Our CFAs are Common Formative Assessments, started last year around Christmas uh, with our instructional coach Dakota Brown. Teachers in every grade level do a Common Formative Assessment uh, with their students in reading and math. And then they meet with Dakota and dissect that data. Who's learned, who's got it, who doesn't, from what they were just teaching? And if they're not learning it, what are we gonna do to fix that? So that that goes back into our last E, which to me is the most important, and that's efficacy. I want the teachers in my school to feel like, in our school, to feel like they have the ability to make change if something's not working. So I want them to be sure that students are engaged and what they're doing is effective. And if it's not, how do we know that and what are we gonna do about it? So those are our three Es this year. Every year, all the schools have goals. And when we looked at, at the end of last year, when we looked at last year's goals, we did feel like we had achieved our parent engagement and community involvement goal, and we were very proud of that. When I started in December, there were already a lot of great things in place, um, including our PTW, Parents and Teachers of Wittenburg, was the strongest I had ever seen it. So we just continued that same path. We really worked on our social media presence, uh, making sure that parents could see what was happening in our schools and felt involved in that. And so at the end of the year, when we looked at all our data, we did feel like we had achieved that goal. We kept two others. Um, the first one is this one, and that is our academic goal. While we made good growth last year and we're very proud to be a C school, we're not where we wanna be. We want one hundred percent of our students to be on grade level and achieving where they should be. So we kept um, the idea that we want our students to make five percent gain in all of our different measures. And you can kind of see our general data there across the bottom. So everything is good, not where we want it to be, but we're definitely moving in the right direction from a D to a C school, from fifty-four percent proficient or a school performance score to fifty-seven. So it's not five, but it's definitely moving in the right direction. All of our scores came up, so we're just gonna continue to move from there. And we're not trying to finish that five percent we were working on last year. We're starting from where we are now and trying to go an additional five percent. This goal is with our MTSS processes, and this was one that in the past, we felt like we had achieved. But as with many things, the longer you do something, the more you realize that you don't know. So with our MTS processes, we realized that there were still things um, in our multi-tiered system of support that we needed to continue to work on. So this year, we reopened this goal so that we could work on intervention logs, making sure that our interventions, uh, which is our small group work with students was really targeted and that we dread true training for the people who are giving those interventions. We also have a a large focus on um, social emotional learning this year, which has continued since COVID and our behavior. So we in- increased our focus on those things through this goal to make sure that all our processes were in place for our behavior needs and our social emotional needs, as well as academic for our students. In achieving these goals, we are trying to give our students as much appropriate fun as we can at school and make sure that they have an incentive to really be there and be engaged. So across the bottom, with our academic push, you can see that we, we bought um, Summer Bridge books for every student in the school for the summer. And that was a book where the students were to spend about ten minutes, took about twenty from parent feedback, tw- uh, ten minutes a day. And they got some reading and math practice with their parents all summer long. If they finished that, which was a lot, it was three months, sixty days of work with their parents. And when they came back, they had a glow-in-the-dark party. So we did um, give them credit for what they did. So if they came in with fifty percent of their book done, then they received fifty percent of the party. Seventy-five percent, they got the entire glow party, which was a blast. Um, and if they did one hundred percent, they got the glow party plus some prizes, plus pizza and drinks. And the students really thought that that was worthwhile. And so we were really trying to hit summer learning loss there. Across the top, there you go. Across the top, you can see our incentives for behavior, which include being a good car rider, being a good bus rider. You can see our students there with their certificates and uh, the Bus Riders of the Month, Car Riders of the Month come and make um, slime with me. And then we also have some classroom incentives. The last picture on the right is a kindergarten class and they earned palms for good behavior in school. And when they received enough, they had a disco party. The seventies lived at Wittenburg that day.
Is making slime with the principal across the system because I saw something going on at Ellendale as well with their principal?
Stolen that idea from Hit Night.
Ah, maybe it's going around the system then. Okay, good.
Was kind enough to loan me her recipe and it's a good one.
Well, she evidently shared it at Ellendale as well.
I would say that all the principals are really great about sharing ideas and and helping out. We appreciate that.
I will be eternally grateful for the endless supply of slime.
And our last goal is a behavior goal. Uh, we wanna make sure that our students are behaving at school, on the bus, everywhere that they can. And so this is a continued goal from last year. Um, last year, the goal actually said that we were gonna reduce the one hundred ODRs down to about seventy-five. And we did not make that goal and I own that. We ended the year with a hundred and seventeen office discipline referrals and a lot of them were from December on. Um, when I came in, it just kind of changed what was acceptable and what was okay. And um, so because of that, our our numbers are a little bit high. But I think our behavior overall is better right now than it's ever been. And our students and families understand what our expectations are. We have had a lot of thank yous from families when I reach out, even the ones who are in trouble. They were like, thank you for letting me know this. Thank you for having um, for just letting us know what's going on and we'll help you with that. So it's it's been good. We expect to see good things this year. And then we do have a lot of new things this year. This is not represented, but we have a writing focus. So every week, our students are really being taught how to write, not just being assigned a writing. That's that's huge for us, I think academically. Here you see our new club and STEM focus. Uh, once a month, our K-two students all have a STEM, STEM opportunity or STEM activity that goes on in their classroom. There's more than that that happens, but this is a set time for STEM. Um, and you can see that in the right-hand corner, our first graders read Chica Chica Boom Boom and they were trying to determine how many letters they could truly stack on that tree. Um, the other pictures are all from our clubs. On that same day, once a month, um, our third through fifth grade teachers and our extra staff have all developed what ideas around the, their personal interests. And they have clubs that they have and the students sign up for their top five wishes for their club. And we place them in something that they chose, that they're interested in, and they go and experience that club. So we have cooking, we have a friendship jewelry-making club. Somebody's bringing in, um, I can't. Like, the police officers came and talked to a group. Um, and then the bottom right is probably my all-time favorite, we have third through fifth graders doing yoga every week. That is fun. That's just fun. We have a cooking club, just just all of those things. And I do think that that's gonna help our behavior long-term because we're, the students are really developing relationships with teachers in a way that they wouldn't have before. That the club, they don't choose their club based on the person who's doing it. They don't know who it is. So they're truly doing their their interest and then that's allowing them to develop, develop a relationship with somebody in the school that they might not have otherwise. And relationships are really what school behavior and learning are all about. And finally, we have a lot of great community partners and we are just so thankful for all of them. Um, they help us in so many ways between uh, supplying our backpacks. That's a program that's been longstanding at Wittenburg. We actually do our own food backpacks for students every week and that's supported by some, by some of our churches. And then just general school supplies, anything that we need, somebody comes up with. So we are grateful for these folks and others. Y'all have any questions?
Uh, what percentage of the Summer Bridge of, I mean, how many, what total students participated in that?
To be honest, more than I expected. We had one hundred books returned um, out of two hundred and sixty-some. Now that is not a great percentage, but truly more than I thought with the first year. I really thought they would have to see the reward at the end and that second year it would be better. So the students that we surveyed afterwards said that it was well worth it. And we had a lot of students who didn't do it who said, next year I'm in.
And will you be able to get granular on those students when you try to get your C up and understand, okay, the students that did the summer, they're doing better? I mean.
We are tracking that.
Okay.
Uh, so we, we also tied in the Summer Bridge books into our um, summer reading camp. So the students who came to summer reading camp, there was a very short time of their day that was spent on that, but it it did give them a a little boost in getting that completed. So we are tracking, definitely tracking who came to summer reading camp, who finished their Summer Bridge book and what their beginning of year data looked like compared to everybody else's.
Thank you.
Your overall score of fifty-seven, getting to a C level, is that a mean score including exceptional children in that?
It is.
Numerator and denominator?
Yes.
And what is your ratio of exceptional children consistent with other elementary schools? Are we talking apples to apples?
I think ours is probably a little bit higher. Wittenburg has traditionally had a higher um, EC population than it compared to our other, other um, schools in the county.
To normalize the data, is there a way to see non-EC in the calculus what your mean score is and to compare that to state averages?
I don't know. That would be interesting to find out.
That's, it's because your school's so small that my question is that you could swing those averages, those those scores wildly just by change in population?
You absolutely can.
As opposed to either improvement or degradation in the quality of education? So what I'm looking for is to look at the quality of education by normalizing the data without being C.
Definitely something to look at. Um, we we tend to look at, we we do look at our EC populations separately, um, even when we are in PLCs with our instructional coach and we, we, we track individual data. So we look at their reading um, on their benchmarks and see where where they are compared to everybody else. Did they make growth? Did they, um, where are they proficiency-wise? And we actually mark the students who are tiered. That's part of our NTSS process in one way. And we mark students who are EC in another way to see, are we reaching our EC students? Are we reaching our tiered students? Are we reaching the general, general population? Where do we need to adjust our instruction?
Well, you'd be able to see both then. And the next question is the CFAs, it's great that you see benefit from. Are you, now that you've had this running for a couple of years, are you starting to see a train-to-trainer behavior taking place? Where those who are the mentors, are they getting those being mentees up to a mentor level so that it can be a self-heating machine?
I I do think that's in the future for us. As far as the Common Formative Assessments, um, we really just started that in December. So our train-to-trainer model is really our instructional coach leading the teachers. And we do have some, some um, staff members who are running with it very strong and they're even having students track their own data, which is when it really becomes powerful. But as far as a true teacher model with new teachers, we're not quite there yet. It, we're still heavily reliant upon our instructional coach. She's just, she's crucial to our success. Thank you. And we do appreciate everything you all do for us.
Thank you, Ms. Glenn.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'll recognize Dr. Danita Dow Reviss, our Director of Communications for an update on the Parent Bill of Rights.
And Dr. Dow Reviss is at a conference, so she is going to um, deliver her presentation, uh, virtually. She pre-recorded this before she left.
Good evening, Dr. Hetner, Chairman Robinson, Vice Chair of the Way, School Board members. Thank you for allowing me an opportunity to present in this fashion. And I'm here to talk a little bit tonight about the Parent Bill of Rights. So I first wanted to just show you on our website and I'm going to share my screen. And then you can see it. So this is uh, our new website. And if you'll notice, under Parents and Community, the very first thing that's posted there under Parents and Community is Parent Bill of Rights. So I put that for us and it clicks to the Parent Bill of Rights where I have posted a list of the things that are enumerated in the Parent Bill of Rights. And you'll notice that there's a school board policy attached to pretty much all of them. And so what you should know, number one, is that these are things that we were doing already and actually even have school board policies in place to help us understand how to do those. So there's, even though the Parent Bill of Rights is massive, it's a huge law, um, there's very little that's actually new to us in um, the way we operate and conduct business in schools. I'll note, or have you know that there's some information here. Um, this is the bill that was passed through the Senate and they were kind of the driver on this one. I also have included a link to all school board policies, but there's a quick link um, to each individual one. And then lastly, the state passed this in um, August, mid-August. And you know, school started like a matter of days after they passed it. And so there were some questions about some of the implementation. And so they did, actually, the General Assembly did go back in September when they were working on the budget and included a whole bunch of revisions in the state budget to the Parent Bill of Rights. And so those became effective in October, October second. And some of those um, had sort of rolling deadlines, like there's some things that go into place in December and January and so on. So we will keep you up to speed on those. I also wanted you to know just on the right-hand side, there's uh, information about how parents can ask parents about materials in the classroom or the library or so on. So this is um, something that we have had in place and I'll enumerate. So this is something that we have had in place and I'll enumerate that more later, but just call your attention to it for the moment. So let me hop over now to the Parent Bill of Rights. And again, thank you for allowing me to present in this fashion. So we have gotten information from several groups and places for implementation. Campbell Shatley, which of course is the law firm that provides advice for several districts, including ours. The North Carolina School Board Association has also been helping with us, trying to kind of wade through some of this. And the North Carolina Association of School Administrators has produced materials and the State Board of Education and the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction. They've all taken the lead on different facets of this to help advise districts on how to move forward. So the first one I want to talk about is deals with health. And you may or may not believe this, but the law actually says things under the caveat of health, like schools cannot take students' DNA without a parent's consent. So it's, it's pretty novel language, but you know that it is following a national trend of similar regulations from all across the country. And the thing that is specifically talked about with health is dealing mostly with reproductive health instruction. And so we have classes that we do with our fourth grade students. Parents are notified about that before the students go through it. It deals with information about changes in the body and hygiene and so on, things that fourth graders need to know. And young parents can look at the videos that are used in that class before the children see them and they can choose to have their child knocked out at any point. And you'll notice that's part of board policy thirty-five forty. And those classes are taught usually by key teachers and nurses. They separate them for each role. Nowhere in those classes or curriculum is there any discussion about sexuality or anything like that. So we want you to know that children are getting the instructions in our early classes in what's called the early classes, which again is about hygiene. So that's part of it. And I'm just looking at my notes. Yep. On, on the issue of medical services, we are not able to provide medical services with the exception of first aid or in the case of an emergency. You know that there are parents who leave medicine at school to administer a child, sometimes, you know, usually around lunchtime. And we are still able to do that. They sign the medicine in with the nurses and they have permission forms on file and so on. That all is, you know, I guess sort of loosely medical services that we provide and we're able to continue doing that. And we just want to make sure that we realize that we get, are getting parent consent for vision, dental, hearing screens that we do with students. So that's all the things that kind of fall under the category of health in this new law. So not too much new in reality. And then immunizations, it also sets, spells out the law that folks can get a religious exemption for immunizations, which they always have been able to. So we'll move on to test results. The law says that parents have a right to review results from tests. Those are actually published on a state website called EC Report Card. And we share our testing results with families. It's part of our sharing with the media, with you as a board during reports from time to time. And this is not new that we share these results. That's part of our board policy. So again, look at thirteen ten and four thousand two on, on test results. So the next part says that parents have a right to request an evaluation if their child is academically or intellectually gifted. And we actually have always done this. Again, it's the board policies that I've got enumerated there. So we've gone. The next thing that is listed, this particular law says that parents have a right to inspect materials. And that has always been part of our school board policy. We have a committee. It's called MTAC that is at each school and that stands for Media Technology Advisory Committee. And those committees meet if a parent has an issue with some sort of material in particular and they review whether or not that material should remain and be accessible or not. So if parents have questions about materials, if something comes up, you know, the best place to start is to start with a teacher and the teacher may be able to help you understand like how that particular passage fits in with the curriculum and what, and what the, and the ways that they're using it. If you don't get an answer that meets your satisfaction, then you can ask the principal. And then, you know, there's, there's sort of a chain that you can take that, those questions through. But again, the right to inspect materials is, is not new. That's always been part of, of a district policy. So let's go next to the laws that parents and families have a right to understand how a child's promoted, why a child might be retained. I want to say, in my experience, you better consider retaining a child without having the parent involved in it because if the parent's not supportive that another year in that particular grade might benefit the child, that they have something to gain from it versus just a repeat of the same old thing and the same old behaviors, then it would never be successful. So there's always parent input on issues of retention. And then the high school reports publishes and makes wide available what students have to have to graduate. So now that's in the law, but it was happening anyway and there are the policies that surround that. Next is that parents are able to receive information, report cards, information about the student's success, their conduct, their attendance, et cetera. We call these progress reports that you get every other couple of weeks or so, depending on the school. And then we also have report cards. There's also something called Parent Portal, which is an electronic way to access what your student is doing. And we would encourage parents to sign up for that so that they can keep track of how their child is doing in school. And if part of this piece says that we are not able to change a child's name in their official academic record without notifying the parent. And we have practices from the Student and County Manual that comes from the DPI that says we have to have the parent's direction to do this anyway. And you know, this, this might be a case sometimes where, for instance, like they're the blended family and the father has adopted a child and they want the child to go by a new last name. Well, we require the parent to bring in some sort of court documentation to say that there's been a legal adoption and, and that the child's name is now whatever their survey. And so just understand that it has not been practiced nor policy for us to change names for a child's official academic record. And again, that's usually contained in our school. All right. Next is the right to get information about what the student's learning and also about report cards, state standards, all of these things. So we, as I said earlier, have these in place and have had these in place. And those are part of those board policies. You see listed there. All right. The next is that parents have a right to participate in parent-teacher organizations. And I won't tell you how old I am, but I've been around a little while and you know, parent-teacher organizations have been part of this only since I was a kid. So not new, but there it is in the law. All right. The next part deals with surveys and it says that there's something called protected student information, which means we do not survey students about what you might call like touching subjects, about political affiliation, whether there's any kind of like abuse in the home, things like that. We are, we do not survey students about that. You know, but there are some surveys that the state does that we let parents know about so that we can collect information for staffing. You know, some information about a child who may threaten self-harm is important for us to know about staffing for satellite counselors. So the state conducts some surveys like that and those are, are going to be still good to go as far as this new bill goes. But as far as us, the district or a school collecting information about what you might call sensitive topics, that is not something that we are able to do nor has that been in our practice. Yeah, I think I got all that part. All right. The next is that parents can review library materials. And I described the MTAC Committee a little earlier. And again, this is always a part of a parent's rights here in Alexander County. For most of the state, it's listed there in thirty-two twelve about how a parent can go about doing that. So you can see that most of these things were already part of school board policy. And you're going to hear some about updating school board policy over the next several months. And that is not because we need to update the content of our policies. We just need to make some of the language match what the state has said to make sure things are aligned. So the North Carolina School Board Association has given us some policies on a kind of rolling basis that we will be updating. And I want to just point out that this legislation says, quote, that parents have a right to, quote, direct the upbringing and moral and religious training of his or her child. And that's something we, we want that to be handled at home. And lastly, I might say that there's sort of a subtext in this law that teachers are indoctrinating students and trying to take the place of a parent. And I've even seen some jokes on social media threads that teachers have or whatever and says, "Well, if I can indoctrinate kids, then I will get them to bring a pencil to class." So the, the subtext is a little concerning and I just want to say, you know, teachers are people too. And teachers are people who decide a little few at church. You see them in the grocery store. You see them on the ball field. And they live right here in this community. And they simply want the best for your child. And if anything comes out of this bill, it's our hope as a district that people will realize that they need to help us and they need to be partners and they can engage with the school and the principal and the teachers to make the life, academic success of the student and that student's future just brighter today. So you know, remember, it's all part of our motto here in Alexander County, which is children first. So I regret that I am not there to take your questions, but I'd be happy to take emails from you guys and if I don't know the answers, I will research them and send you a response. But I appreciate your time and just the bottom line is, oh, pretty much all this stuff we were already doing anyway, but the, the bill has just sort of packaged it into one place where it says that schools are supposed to behave this way and all for the betterment of the student by making sure that the families are engaged. All right. Have a good evening. Thanks.
Do we have any questions? Obviously, Dr. Revis and not Elizabeth, any questions on that that maybe Dr. Heffner could address?
I think a follow-up question to this, I think a very important topic was discussed with the MTAC parent discussions on media content in our schools. I think it'd be important for us as a board to receive a summary report of all the MTAC concerns or feedback from parents across all of our libraries, just to understand, is there material out there that parents have concerns about? Is there topics that we should be aware of? But is there anything sleeping under the water there that we should have our radar screens painted? It's just a broad brush approach to canvas the community and understand what's going on in, in the library materials in our school.
Any other questions?
I just have a comment. I've done this for a long time. And before this, I was on the SIT team at Stony Point and I've been involved with my kids' school for a long time. And we have begged parents to be involved. And now we've got laws to get parents involved. I hope it helps because I know for as many years, my oldest is twenty-nine. And I've been, I've, well, for twenty-five years, I've been involved. Our teachers do a great job. Our principals do a great job. Our schools in Alexander County are doing a great job. I can't speak for Charlotte and Raleigh and all those big cities and I don't want to. And it's a shame that we have to have laws to try to get parents involved. But I know in our county, we have tried for many, many years to get parents to come. And I mean, we feed them so they'll come to a meeting at school. That's how you get people to come, which that's my mama's philosophy. If you feed them, they'll come. So I agree with that. But it, it's sad that we have to have this law and then it comes out and it makes the schools sound like they're not doing what they should have been doing anyway. And, and that's not, that's not accurate. In my heart, I don't believe that in Alexander County that has anything to do with anything. We've been doing it. We're going to continue to do it. And we hope parents will join us and we hope parents will be involved because we've begged for it for many years.
I think I'd agree with you. I think that's a great point, even though I haven't had kids in the system that long. But one, I, one thing that would, to piggyback on what you've said, that I think would be quite helpful would be to receive a, a view of what Dr. Dalrevis stated, that she has canvassed the Parent Bill of Rights and compared it against our policies and we are ninety, ninety-five percent in compliance already by the structure of the governance model that the administration has been operating under before this bill came into function. But there are these fine-tune points we're going to update and then move on. And I think that would be a very positive message that reinforces what you're saying with data.
Any other questions? All right. At this time, we'll go to Board of Education Committee reports. Do we have any committee reports to share at this time?
I don't have a report, but I just want to thank y'all for supporting the golf tournament for the Education Foundation. That money goes for our teacher grants that we will present next month at the board meeting. So all that money raised goes to teachers. And our golf tournament is October the twenty-eighth. For anybody that wants to be a part of that in the, a team, just let me know. And so again, I just want to thank y'all for your support.
Any other committee reports? If not, I'll recognize Dr. Heffner for our superintendent's report.
Thank you, Chairman Robinson. This report is attached to your agenda. I just wanted to offer another reminder that the meeting date for the Commissioner's October meeting was changed to October sixteenth for anyone planning to attend. Bullet number two, plans have been made to visit Wittenburg Elementary on Monday, October sixteenth, beginning at eleven-thirty. Lunch and a tour will be provided and all board members are invited and encouraged to attend. So if you will, mark your calendars, Monday, October sixteenth at eleven-thirty. Bullet number three, you may or may not know that a bill was included in the state budget preventing school systems from requiring more than twenty-two credits for graduation. We in Alexander County currently require twenty-eight. While the intentions for early graduation were good, there are unintended consequences in that it would prevent such things as offering an AP Academy and Capstone Diploma. It would prevent dual enrollment for high school and community college courses. It would prevent CTE completers and the list goes on and on. The North Carolina School of Superintendent's Association Executive Board conducted a meeting with Senator Michael Lee on October sixth regarding the early graduate program. We ask that the following technical corrections be made to the legislation. The first one, the superintendents believe the policy proposed by the State Board of Education is the right approach for implementing this new program and that policy cannot move forward without technical correction that DPI has shared with Senator Lee. And for those of you who don't know, he is the one that introduced the bill. I have attached down below at the end of, of my report. Uh, I have attached down below at the end of of my report, you can see it electronically. Uh, I have attached that State Board of Education proposed policy. You're welcome to read that. Also, the superintendents are requesting that Senator Lee make a technical correction to adjust the effective date of the Early Graduate Program to the tw- two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five school year rather than this year as it is now required. I will let you know if the technical corrections are made. And again, if you just want to see what was proposed to Senator Lee, it's on the backside of your update. Bullet number four, I've provided a link for your reading pleasure below. The article captures some of the work and discussions going on at the state board level pertaining to the parent bill of rights, pay increases and graduation requirements. I would also ask that you uh refer to Dr. Dalrevis's article about teacher pay. Because what might look good as far as numbers for some teachers, it's very dismal for experienced teachers. And I think that I was pretty clear when I said we finally have a budget, not the budget I had hoped for, but we have a budget. That's what I was referencing. And I just want you all to be keenly aware that that seven percent pay increase, all teachers are not seeing that, a majority are not. On bullet number five, the date for our community focus group meeting is being determined. Dr. Dalrevis is waiting on a few more votes as the timeline for voting ends on October thirteenth. So hopefully, I'll be able to share with you in my Friday highlights uh what that date will be with other details. And then yesterday, I forwarded everybody some information about the North Carolina School Board Association Conference. As you can see, as you could see on what I sent you yesterday, all reservations need to be made on or before the fourteenth and that Saturday. If you are planning to attend, and a couple of you responded to my email yesterday saying I cannot. But uh, if you are planning to attend, you need to let Deborah know by this evening during our break in between open and closed session because she must get on uh those registrations and room reservations. Do you have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll move to unfinished business and I'd like to recognize Sharon Mahaffey, our Chief Financial Officer for uh Proposed Board of Education Policy Revisions, Special Changes, Second Reading.
Okay, we have the um revised uh changes for um the uh Parents' Bill of Rights. Uh, if you'll notice on the summation sheet, in November, it is required that we have a public hearing or otherwise get parent input. So we are planning to do that in November. And December, we'll uh look at those those changes that were requested. And December, we'll have the final approval to be implemented on January one. And just to make sure, you want to, the one way you can see what we were doing and what the changes are is to look at the revisions in the policies. And um, it it as you'll see, most of the things just add to what we were currently doing. Um, the policies that will be involved in up for the public hearing next month are parent involvement, policy thirteen ten, parent inspection and objection to instructional materials, policy thirty-two ten, comprehensive health education program, policy thirty-five forty, criminal behavior, policy forty-three thirty-five, survey of students, policy seventy-two twenty, student health services, policy sixty-one twenty, and staff responsibilities, policy seventy-three hundred.
Surveys of students was forty-seven twenty, you you all can read that on the agenda. That's okay, you just transpose two numbers, no, no big deal, they can see it.
Thank you. Any questions on that?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll recognize Ms. Mahaffey again for uh Proposed Board of Education Policy Revisions, First Readings.
Okay, we have nine policies up for first reading. Um, we're um, Liz who helps me with these policies. And I are trying to get through all of these so that when we get the new group of policies from all the legislative changes, uh, we can begin work on those. But those policies are professional staff development, dual enrollment and higher education courses, pregnancy and parenting students and employees, integrity and civility, automated phone and text messaging, uh, media, uh, news media relations, insurance for student transportation services, evaluation of licensed employees and evaluation of non-licensed employees. I'll um get some input and or ask for input and bring those back for the second reading next month.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Board members, at this time, you see we have a recommendation on the old Wittenburg school property by uh Board Member Bowman. He was unable to be with us tonight. Uh, on behalf of the Facilities Committee, we uh, the committee was waiting on the recommendation for the realtor, which we received last month in our uh presentation. And uh, at this time, the Facilities Committee was uh seeking a recommendation from the board, uh, whether to proceed proceed with that uh or otherwise. Is there a recommendation?
I make a recommendation, proceed.
I'll second.
At a motion by Board Member Dagenhart, uh, and a second by Board Member Agüez. And just to be clear, that recommendation was to sell the property as is. Uh, no, uh, no process to be taken to clear any facilities from that, just so everybody's clear on that. And there is going to be some uh work with the attorney to get all the details uh in process, but we needed that recommendation to move forward. All right, so uh, all those in favor of the uh turning the old Wittenburg school property over to the realtor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. At this time, I would like to recognize uh Dr. Betsy Curry for our Literacy Intervention Plan Presentation.
Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chairman, Dr. Heffner, members of the board. I just wanted to um get a vote from you on the Literacy Intervention Plan, which has been submitted to the state, was sent back to us with just a few minor recommendations, which we have fixed, and so we just need your approval. This is a new plan that we have had to write in the last two years in order to be able to access P R C zero eighty-five funds, which help us to supplement the cost of letters training and other things just to keep teachers' skills up.
All right. We have any questions for Dr. Curry on this? If not, uh, what's the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion to move forward.
Second.
Motion by Board Member Marie, second by Board Member Ryan. Uh, all those in favor of the adoption of this uh plan, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, likewise, motion carries.
All right.
Thank you.
And we will now recognize Dr. Curry for our Comprehensive Needs Assessment.
Thank you. Again, greetings from the curriculum department. Um, this is our twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three Comprehensive Needs Assessment. You have seen some of this data already, so we're not going to go into a lot of detail in some areas. But I did find some of the data very interested in, interesting and wanted to make sure that you were aware of this. So when we do our Comprehensive Needs Assessment each year, we look at these two areas, M T S S, implementation data, student achievement data, attendance data, discipline data. That's the multi-tiered system of support and those are the intervention levels that we put in place for kids to help them to be successful. This is one of those things that the interventionists that we've been able to hire with S R funds and the T A's really help our schools to be able to do. We also look at personnel, we look at teacher retention data or staff retention data. We also look at the North Carolina Teacher Working Condition Survey results that is just on even number, even numbered years, but they are doing a revision of that. So we won't have that data until next year when we do our Comprehensive Needs Assessment. And we've been examining exit interview data as well. Um, the M T S S implementation data is measuring how well we are implementing and the fidelity of that implementation. So we do a F A M D, which is, which assesses the district level implementation. And we're looking for improvements in that every year. These are the findings from the district M T S S team. And what we need to do is specify and utilize a problem solving model. We use a problem solving model, it's just not put out there for everyone. And we have to begin doing it with the district M T S S team, not just at the district level or at the school level. So what we've done already to address that need is to have the district M T S S team meet and problem solve different areas of data surrounding attendance, behavior and academics. The district M T S S team establishes data decision rules for integrated district level problem solving. This is to help us to get to that next level because we're measured at implementing or operationalizing or optimizing. And so we are working for that and hope to have that ready by the November seventeenth meeting. At least a draft of that to put out to the schools no later than January, we'll problem solve what that looks like so they can all have access to that. We already have a pretty solid decision rules for academics, but we're really working on defining those for behavior and for attendance. We also need to work on having ongoing communication and implementation of the attendance and the behavior protocol. We have what we call standard treatment protocols, which are research-based interventions that we have to measure the impact of those on students and report that out. And that's a lot of the work that the coaches do also. At the school level, they do a F A M S and they share that data with Dr. Heffner and myself every year. And they are looking to increase their implementation schools, uh, or their implementation scores at the school level. And so they will look at that F A M S with their school improvement teams and that becomes part of their school improvement team goals. The thing that we needed to do almost as a system, but in in many of our schools, to make sure that we had schedules that supported M T S S. And what that looks like at the middle school and the high school in this past year, we've had the um, we've had a change in the schedule so that there is more opportunity, there's more time in core, but also more opportunity for those kids to receive the intervention without missing core instruction. So that was the rationale for some of the changes that you may have heard about in schedules at the difference. This is our third grade B O G reading data, that's the beginning of the year or beginning of the grade data. Uh, what I wanted to look at with this was to see the number of students overall that maybe changed from one level to another for children coming into third grade. I think the most interesting thing on this one is if you look at that very last column, it's the number of students who met that benchmark at the beginning of the year. The parentheses is the year prior, that's the twenty-two, twenty-three year. And so the solid number in that last column, like if you look at Bethlehem, nineteen point three five percent of their students have met the read to achieve standard already in third grade. Last year, it was twenty-four point six six. So four of our schools increased the number of students who met that read to achieve benchmark at the beginning of the year assessment. Kudos to our K two teachers because they're getting them ready. And three of our schools did not. I want to caution you when you look at those numbers because there's not a big difference. And this could be the difference that some of our schools are one or two students that did not meet that benchmark. But it's just interesting information to have to kind of look at as a district which way we're trending. So if we look at the number of students also not proficient, what we want to do is seeing that number decreasing. And again, in most of our schools, we did, and that kind of corresponds with the read to achieve data. We can also drill down in this data as each one of our schools do. And I think a really good example of that is to look across the Stony Point Elementary School line. You will see that they had no level fives in twenty-two, twenty-three, nor did they in twenty-three, twenty-four. And that's the highest level of achievement, I would say those are your your kids that are like in the ninetieth percentile or higher. But if you look at their level fours, last year they had none, but thirteen point six four percent of their population has one this year, has have level fours this year. So that is really a big jump. Now again, it's a smaller school, so it might be three or four kids. But that's pretty exciting because it shows that that education is going on to promote that high level of learning. So we kind of look across there, we just don't spend a lot of time at looking at this data in particular, other than for individual kids and to see how kids maybe did that came to summer reading camp. This data is very interesting and I know that you've had a chance to preview this, but we looked at the twenty-two, twenty-three, that was last spring, the read to achieve proficiency data. As you may be well aware, we typically look at all of the counties that border us when we're looking at data or the ones that are in the northwest region. One of the things that we looked at this year was the parents' educational level because it positively impacts student proficiency. So we know that wealth is tied to proficiency, as is students or parents' education. A lot of times we'll look at wealth of the community and you would expect proficiency to come down. That's not tied to growth, but it is tied to students' ability to pass the test. And so that's one of the reasons we often focus on growth over proficiency. But what I found very interesting is there were four school systems that had higher um scores than we did percent proficient at read to achieve. So if you look at those school districts, one of them is Elkin and Elkin is a city school system. So quite often, our city school systems get the county funding, but they also get additional city funding. So they're funded at a higher level than a traditional county school system. Iredell Statesville Schools, I don't know.
Well, the percentage of population with a post-secondary degree is much higher than ours.
Yes, thirty-five point seven, I think it says. And then, of course, if you look at Watauga, it's in the mid forties, I think.
It's double, it's more than double.
Yes. So the the districts that are performing better than us have a much higher educated population than we have. So, for example, Watauga, you might have a lot of um Appalachian state employees there or professors' kids. But I also want to draw attention to the fact that we are fifth highest, but there is only one county that has a less educated populace than we have. So again, I think that's a real good testimony to the job that our leaders in our schools and our teachers are doing.
Your third grade teachers.
Yes, we do.
Yeah.
And just um, and and just people really pulling for these kids and doing their best every single day, so.
Yep.
That's very powerful.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I don't even.
That's okay, no, please.
Two slides back, um, are we doing anything, the the four schools that are that that have the, they're in the green. Um, are we doing anything there to share information or share with the other three schools about what's going on and and ideas to help bring those schools up? Or are they sharing information across?
And and that's what you're kind of getting at is the problem solving.
Sure.
And we have not done that because that's been so tight. And if you look at it, Bethlehem and Sugarloaf had the highest growth in reading in the county. And so they're doing some pretty amazing things too. So to isolate it to one thing, when we're all pretty much doing the same things, we have a curriculum adoption coming up in the year after this one, so we're engaging staff in that now. But we have a pretty standardized curriculum, meaning that we're all doing Orton Gillingham and K two. So sometimes when you look at this data, you have to try to ascertain and put it with other data. And we call that triangulating data because if you have three sources that tell you the same thing, then that's a really reliable measure.
Well, the coaches are talking about it all the time.
Oh, yeah.
So I know when they did that B O G, they were already talking where their teacher changes in second grade, you know, that led to those scores at the beginning of third grade. So they talk about that sort of thing all the time, they meet every Friday for that purpose.
Yes, grade level meetings, we're talking, actually, we're doing a lot of talking about the new science standards, but we also talk, they share ideas in grade level meetings. After every eye-ready assessment, we come in and we problem solve that data. If three schools rocked it out or one school did not do well and the rest did, then we say, what are your fourth grade teachers doing?
The North Carolina State Board of Education maintain a database of best practices from each grade level across each discipline as a baseline to compare ourselves to? Based on what Anthony's saying, what's best practice, right?
Um, they highlight best practices and we've been actually highlighted a few times. But really, this is all research based. Like, we know from the science of reading that we needed to have a strong phonics program for systematic phonics instruction.
But you're talking about root cause analysis and identifying your root access and what's driving, what's the forcing function behind behavior performance, right? And I would expect that across the state, across the country, it would be relatively similar.
And that's the research base.
And once someone has invented the wheel, how do we get access to that wheel invention? So we don't have to go and do all the background investigation and figure out we need a wheel.
We are doing, the state has required us to do the science of reading training. A lot of that training, we had already implemented some of this. This is really good training. So we're not reinventing the wheel. We're following the research base, but the state has required us to do that.
I couldn't explain myself properly. I don't mean that it's not appropriate to find best practices. What I'm talking about is if someone else has already figured out a best practice, how do we leverage that so that we're not spending our energy to try and figure out the best practice, which has already been figured out somewhere else?
Right. We're not, we're not expending our energy finding out best practice. We're fine tuning the things that go with it. We know what best practice is because there's a research base that tells us what best practice is. We're honing in on how well are we implementing these things? Or what are the circumstances that also impact student achievement? So where the research base doesn't help us is if we can say, okay, what happened at Stony Point in third grade this year? And that's, nothing really happened. I'm just making that up. But Stony Point principal or the coach might say, well, we've got two brand-new teachers in third grade this year and they're just not up to par with the curriculum. Or we only have twenty-five kids and eight of them are EC in this grade level and, and struggle significantly. So we're trying to hone in on down to the individual school, but there's also already a research base that has defined what best practice is.
I think what he's actually asking, and please correct me if I'm wrong, is there a toolbox that you go to and pull things out of? And North Carolina does not allow that. They have state mandated standards, but it is left to each education LEA to develop their own curriculum.
We have that to wheel across one hundred and fifteen schools.
For the most, but that's to our advantage.
It is.
Most of the time, it is.
Most of the time, because we can make it, like we've had those meetings about our curriculum and, and what, you know, all the conversations about the stuff that people didn't want in the curriculum. We don't have that in ours because we do our own.
There's a hundred and fifteen school districts trying to develop curriculum because it's, it's been legislated that the state won't. But they do highlight best practice and there is a research base that informs best practice.
Even as far back as when I was, was in a different position, we were going to the Florida Center of Reading Research to get best practices because those practices in literacy had been, you know, they had been researched for a long time.
For our standard treatment protocols.
Yeah.
Some of those research.
So, but we have to develop our own curriculum.
And we actually, I mean, I think that's one of the things that we do well and are recognized at state levels because we've done all this work so well and other people are stealing it from us. We've had to actually copyright curriculum maps so that we get credit for them. We share, but we also want credit because we were the ones, this coaching team, that put in work to do that. We have not shared out our standard treatment protocols on a wide field basis because it's been a lot of work and a lot of effort. They said we needed, asked for examples of them. They could not provide an example, so we developed them. But that's what your coaching team does here.
I'm just smiling because I'm looking at Sharon, wondering if that's a reumeration opportunity from other districts to take our best practices since we've spent the money on the others.
Someday when I retire, I'll probably bring this show on the road. And what they pay people who do staff development and consulting work is outrageous, but.
That might be an action plan.
But do you know what? I think what he's asking Sharon's not allowed either because we are not allowed to charge for anything that was done with state-paid staff and on state time. So that's illegal to charge for any of it and anyway.
And I have learned my lesson with.
Lots of mandates.
I worked with them for three years and I see documents that I created on their website with no credit, but okay, but now we at least get credit for it. Okay. So school performance grades by school type. So what I would like to draw your attention to here is that the schools with parentheses after their grade are schools that have changed. So for example, Bethlehem went from a C to a B. Sugarloaf went from a C to a B. West went from a C to a B. And Wittenburg went from a D to a C. So all of our schools that have changed in their grade have come up in their grade. It is really, really hard, which you'll see in a minute, to have an impact on that grade. You can also see the percentage of schools that achieved that grade in each grade level. So for example, look at the number of schools that get an A or a B at the high school. I had this calculated somewhere, an A, B, or it's a much higher percentage than you would have at the middle schools and the elementary schools. Because they're on a different testing measure. They have different things that fit into that. So you can kind of see where we would fit in there with the percentages. So growth by school for the twenty-two, twenty-three, and then in parentheses, the twenty-one, twenty-two. I do want to tell you that twenty-twenty-one, eleven of our twelve schools exceeded expected growth. One school met expected growth. It was only off by exceeding by, I think it was like five one-hundredths of a point. The reason I tell you that is because when they determine our growth, they're comparing it to all the other schools in the state and all the other students in the state. So when the pandemic was over, we jumped into high gear. We brought kids back to school prior to other districts doing that. So we had this huge growth in twenty-twenty-one where eleven of our schools exceeded. Twenty-two, twenty-three, we didn't look so good because they compared our growth to everybody else's and that's when they raised the bar and moved up. So this is kind of looking at apples and oranges. However, I'm happy to say that Bethlehem met growth. Anybody that changed again did better, with the exception of the high school, they exceeded growth the year before and they met growth this year. And they had some significant staffing changes with some high-quality staff that they moved into administrative and coaching positions. And that may have had an impact on that. I cannot go any further without saying that we did have two low-performing schools. However, that being said, growth at East improved from a negative ten point one-two to a negative six point five-five. So they are trending in the right direction and I am super proud of them and super proud of the efforts that have been made there, super proud of the climate there. If you remember, we started the school year with one principal before the teachers even came back or before the students came back, we had a second principal. And thank goodness, Andy Berry did a great job and he did an interim position and then Brad came in. So they had a rough year and they still trended in the positive direction. So I really, I believe I would be, I would bet probably big money, I hope I don't get in trouble for that, in saying that they will meet RC growth this year because they had like seventeen math kids that were one or two questions away from being proficient. They were so close and they're digging into their data and they've just got some really good things going on this year and all the support they need to close that gap. So super excited to see what they do. Hidden Knight Elementary, this is heartbreaking. They were a negative five point two-three in twenty-one, twenty-two. They were nine one-hundredths of a point from meeting growth expectations. Nine one-hundredths of a point. And they were one point overall from being a C-level grade and not being low-performing. So kudos to them. I plan to go bring them ice cream sandwiches one day. I've already brought them to East, but I'm just so proud of the work that's going on at both the schools. And I hate that they're designated as low-performing because they're anything but.
Right.
They're doing some really good things, so. And we're going to just keep working. We'll get there.
That's right.
We did this last year also. We compared ourselves to the surrounding districts, those that actually physically touch our borders because they're the most demographically like ours. You can see that there's not a huge gap, anywhere from fifty to sixty percent. Wilkes County had sixty percent of their kids proficient. Alexander County came in at fifty-nine. I don't like it when Wilkes beats us because we usually beat everybody. But I, I will congratulate them. They have some good things going on in reading, which I will pick their brain about to find out if we can learn anything from them. But pretty proud of that also. AP score report at the high school, super exciting. If you can look down those two columns, it says the number of students that were actually tested in the, in the middle, well, the second column. The third column is the class average of passing, the kids that score three or higher. That is super exciting because we're above the state average in all of those areas except for two. In that bottom or in the black section, that's four or less students. So I did not put what the percentage was or how many students because I did for the class because I didn't want anybody to discern who those students might be. So if there are two students in that class and one didn't pass, it would be too easy to maybe guess about who that student might be. So you can see that we were below in two of those areas, but I won't tell you how many children were actually in those areas, but it's a small number of children. Super proud of them. Great job AP teachers. CTE also did a great job. I'm glad Crystal's here in case she can help me, but this is the state test and you can see that the ag department came up from seventy to eighty percent. The family consumer science group came up from eighty-five to eighty-eight. Health sciences came up from seventy-nine to ninety-one, huge jump there. And then you can look at AC, all state tests in twenty-two, twenty-three were eighty-four percent proficient and the northwest region was at seventy-eight and the state seventy-two. So they're doing a great job there also. This is another type of test and these are proof-of-learning concepts. And these assessments are changing and so we don't compare the year-to-year results because the assessment changes throughout the year, how those kids are being assessed. But we can look at overall proficiency from twenty-two, twenty-three and you can see that we came up overall four percent in proficiency on those assessments. Most exciting data, I think, despite the test scores that were so great, is that six hundred and seventy-three students earned an industry credential compared to three hundred and sixty-five students last year.
Wow.
So look at how much that has come up from twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one, which was twenty-three point seven, big increase of twelve point eight percent the next year and then this past year, another twelve point one percent. So eighty-one percent of ninth grade students were enrolled in at least one CTE class and CTE has greatly increased students participating in work-based learning opportunities. We had sixty-one internship placements and fourteen students in pre-apprenticeship programs with CBCC and mechatronics, automotive construction, and several who have started the jobs shadowing process. So I'm super proud of Crystal and the entire CTE department for just doing such a fantastic job. Great data to have. We've never had data this comprehensive before for our comprehensive needs assessment. This year we looked at all subjects in AC and in North Carolina. All subjects, we were fifty-eight point five. The state of North Carolina was fifty-three point six. Reading grades three through eight, we were fifty-one point one. North Carolina was fifty point two. You can, you can kind of scroll down those and you can see that we were above the state in all areas and some areas like math one and math two, I'm really super happy about, or math three, rather, I'm super happy about those because what that means is that a lot of our students that are the best students take math one as eighth graders. So those scores to still be at fifty-eight point eight compared to the state at thirty-six really is a testimony to our math one teachers. Then you look at math three, those are the brightest of the bright across the state. Those are the kids that typically took math one at the middle school because they have to take one high school EOC in math. And there's a big difference there too. So I think that what we're doing in math, even if it doesn't always show at the elementary level, I think those kids are starting to come up to the high school level and the middle school level and we're going to start seeing that impact there. So proud of that also. Attendance data.
How do we communicate? A, outperforming the state, but B, continued improvement across each one of these subjects? How do you communicate this to the community and let the folks know the good work that
Well, I think this is, this is of course one avenue and this is recorded. And Angela King's here. I'm hoping she's going to report some of this really good data. We share it out every opportunity we get, but it just, it doesn't always resonate. I think people see, and remember last year when people commented on the read, read to achieve proficiency and it really wasn't an accurate measure of our proficiency. They see little bits of this information and I have just found that as much as we want parental involvement and community involvement, you see it's all, all employees in here.
Well, but what's, what's wonderful is the previous slide says, we're preparing our kids for the trades and to, to really, you know, address the infrastructure needs of our country. And they're the critical element that keeps this country running. And then this is telling me, we're also preparing that portion of our community that wants to continue on to secondary and graduate education and so on. So we're, we're addressing all the constituents in our schools. It's the message I'm getting, but if there's a way that we could broadcast that to the community, because it's not about CTE being more important or, or pre-university training, they're all equally important.
Or AP, every child deserves an opportunity.
Every, every, every one of our kids deserves to be successful and we need to give them a role to do. And I, this is saying, you're doing that. So can we do better, of course, right?
Well, and I think that's to Grant Sizemore's point. You know, I mean, Grant, we're not going to cut CTE because that's a different funding, unless their funding gets cut from the federal government. But just so you know, but we want to have, that was Dr. Heffner's vision when she first came in, was to increase opportunities for students. We have increased opportunities. If you look at the early college, the number of kids that are graduating from there with not just one associate's degree, but two.
But there's another headline.
Yeah, yeah. And so I don't, I mean, we all stay running all the time and I wish we had, we do have a PIO who has five thousand other duties, but we just, and then when you get it out there, we don't know that people are reading it.
What, and, and we ever thought of or tried to track post-high school, post our, our school system, some of these kids that have went out there and, and see where they're at for two, three, four years down the road, five years, ten years down the road about the successes that they had in high school and how they took that and applied it to their life after high school?
We've done that on a, on a smaller, a molecular level, but the state is starting to track that now. Crystal's been doing some work where they're going to start having some, some way to track where those kids end up.
Right. And I, I think that's especially with CTE. I mean, you're talking plumbing, you're talking, and, and even like AP and.
They've been doing that for, they've been doing that for years, expanding it, right?
I think that's very important because I mean, we can look back and say, okay, look, this, this is a cycle of working, you know, and, and it's a, and it's a pat on our back for what we are providing for our students. I mean, CTE, AP, you know, across the board, I think.
Dual enrollment.
Dual enrollment. Yeah, exactly. I mean, there's so much out there that, that our school system for the size it is offers the individual child. And I'm so proud of that. And with the budget stuff going on, it's kind of scary, but I hope we can really, really at the root of it, protect that because I think that's something we need to be founded on. I really do.
And unfortunately, I feel like almost everything we have an impact on. It can't, no. We have, we have really good people that work about as hard as we do, so to try to get anything more, like I think somebody had asked, do you have a grant writer? No, we don't. We write all our own grants. You know, do you have a PIO? Yeah, but she does five other jobs too. But we're, we're going to keep plugging away for as long as we can and, and we're not going to use that as an excuse, but at, at some point, you can only take away so much, whether it be the state, you know, and really it's the state, I think, that is hurting us more than anything. So anyway, so this is our attendance data. We look at this year-to-year. This is part of that MTSS process. So you will see that the first year in mostly yellow is twenty-one, twenty-two. And what we did, and, and also in twenty-two, twenty-three, is we tracked the state attendance rate and our attendance rate. Pre-COVID, the state was always at ninety-five percent or so. We were always above the state average with attendance. Last year, our scores came down pretty significantly. We can't really blame that on COVID because in twenty-one, twenty-two, our rate of attendance was higher, other than the fact that kids could be counted as remotely present if they had COVID, so that may have helped some of that attendance rating. What, this is how we problem solve data, so I wanted to put this up there as an example for you. If you look across at AEC, notice that they had two pink areas, lightly shaded red in twenty-one, twenty-two. They knew that was an issue. They developed an attendance goal and look at where they are this year. They have probably the highest attendance rate in the district. The problem is that sometimes when you move your focus from one thing to another, you lose momentum in the other area. So it's hard keeping all those balls in the air. So you can see that we have different areas and the way that they're trending and what might be a school of concern. So we look at students who are missing 10% or days of more. And I'm so glad, Melinda, that you shared that because those students are at risk for failure. And so when you look down that list and you see the number of students last year that missed 10% or more of days, I wonder how closely that might align with some of our student achievement scores. But then we also look at those who missed 20% or more days. That is missing 34 days of school. And look at the number of students, when you look at the numbers, like at AC, 6.2% of theirs did. 77 kids are chronically absent and will probably drop out. Research-based statistics have proven. So some of those kids maybe didn't show up and they just went somewhere and never enrolled anywhere else. We, some of those kids we're still tracking. So I want to show you what all of the schools are doing now, but then I'm gonna show you an example of what AC has done this year. So our goal is to increase attendance to be at 95% again, which is pretty consistent with the pre-pandemic average. Decrease the number of students who miss 10% or more of days. Decrease the number of students who are consistently chronically truant. Core support, that's the bottom level of MTSS. The attendance team, which is part of the district MTSS team, will work to promote a positive school culture and student engagement by providing resources and support to each school improvement team. So one of the things that Melinda's doing at the club, to increase student engagement. So that's just a really good example, kids want to have fun at school and giving attendance incentives. Differentiate a core support, that's for your 15% or so kids that get up to that two or that 10% of days. And so we're looking at early intervention, increased parent-teacher contact, administrative involvement, social worker and counselor call home. So that's almost like a standard treatment protocol for that level of student. Supplemental support is home visits, agency referral, work with the counselors and social workers to get to the root of the problem. So that is trying to find out why they're absent. Is it access to transportation? We've given kids alarm clocks before because mom and dad can't get up to get them on the bus, you know, things like that, that we try to get to the root of the problem to help. Intensive support, what we've, what we've realized is we can only do so much. I tracked two students last year that had like 138 absences for the year. So I asked Ms. Anderson to share with me, what did we do? How did we respond to these kids? And these were middle school kids. And we went through every meeting we had set up, every home visit we did, we need more help. So I have an email out to Chad Pennel, Mike Millsaps, Thomas Mitchell from DSS and Dale Graham from the court system. Because somewhere along the way, we can't do any more than we're already doing. And so we need to know what they're able to do legally and what they can help us to do, either through the SROs, through DSS or through the court system. Because when I look back at these, these kids that were chronically absent, we did everything we could. And so they're not, they're gonna count as not proficient for us. Okay. So this is being monitored in our school improvement teams every month. That's one of the things that I've asked principals to do. So if you can, Kat, do you mind clicking on that example there where it says it's a, it's a hyperlink? And I don't think I can get to it from here. Thank you. You can look at this, it's linked to your presentation, but it is one of the very first meetings that Mr. Lael had with his school improvement team, where they started looking at this data very, very early on. And I don't know, Jess, can you scroll down on that? So I'm not sure if it's in here, but is it discipline data and an academic data too on this sheet? I thought so. So they look at all three of those things every month and really begin to problem solve so that we can have some kids that are maybe not following through the tracks. So this is the work of the school improvement team. It's aligned to their school improvement goals, which is our next thing, but we don't have to talk a lot about that one. But just super proud of them for really digging into this data. Then you have kids that fall in all those categories. The behavior problems are often, the academic problems are often the kids missing a lot of school. So we gotta triage them.
Along those lines, in all of your summary data of attendance by school, where's the student success center? How is that tracked?
That's tracked through the high.
So that's a subset of the high school member?
Yes, yes, because they're on the side of the high school's power.
Also, they're testing that, that would be included in the history as well.
Fine. And I'm sure she looks at her individual test data, but she also looks at percent of kids graduating, percent of kids recovering credits. So there, there are other measures to measure their success. Okay, can we go back to the PowerPoint? Okay. Okay, this is our discipline data and we're getting close to the end, I promise. But we have improved in every category except to reports to law enforcement. So the conversation, when I shared this data with the coaches, because now we have coaches at every level, I'm like, why do you think that is? And so we began to problem solve that data. And then somebody mentioned, and I hadn't thought of this one, which is why you problem solve in a group, is we have SROs in every building. It's really easy now to report to law enforcement or easier, they're right there. We don't have to wait on somebody to come. The SRO will say, I'm going to take this as a report, when we may not have reported it before. So that might be one reason. The other reason, I think, is that we're really seeing some behaviors escalating to the point that they become law enforcement issues. So we are looking at this data every month in school improvement team meetings also. You're gonna see October has gone up at the high school. It did last year. We started doing an additional random drug test. We did three last year instead of two. We're seeing a lot more vapings just in the last couple of weeks, which you'll see that in closed session too. So sometimes it's a principal change. A principal might be more likely to assign a certain consequence than another principal. So we have to look at all of that and consider it. Accident interviews, 21, 22, we had 128 people leave our district. The rate of response was 45%. This year, we only had 99 people leave, which is good, that's an improvement. But we only had 35 response, so the rate of response was only 35.3. I like to think that's because those people are happy. Otherwise, if they're mad, they'd probably go on there and respond. But we also had retirees, 20 retirees. So if you look at where they came from, you can look, you can look down there. There are some that are multiple schools, that is typically like your school psychologist and students have multiple school assignments. Last year, you can see on the left-hand column, that's why people left. This year, there were less leaving due to administration. We had nine leave due to retirement, or that was their primary reason for leaving. Relocation closer to home was five. Family obligation was three. Leaving education completely went down to two and you noticed the year before that was 10. But remember what we said, a lot of times people think it's gonna be better somewhere else and then they realize it's really not, it's the state and we all have the same letters requirements and things like that. So two were related to student behavior, better pay benefits somewhere else. Those are things that people said that I had not seen previous, prior to this year, those in red. There were four additional responses that were just one per and they were pretty ugly, so I just, they weren't really worth putting up there, so. And I did put them on the bottom of your notes page if you wanted to see them. But they were all very different, you couldn't group them or categorize them. I know I said we had 35 responses, you might see more than that because sometimes I just couldn't discern which category it fell in, so I maybe put them in two. That is all, any other questions? That is an analysis of the work that was done in this district.
Kudos to all of our staff. Yeah. You know, it takes everybody and our, our staff, our teachers and all of our support staff, everybody does not get recognition enough. There was, you know, they're always looking for ways to improve, just, just like, you know, when you're working with the coaches, whether you're working with the teachers. Everybody's always looking for ways to take it and improve and it shows. And I'm grateful, I see that effort, close to home and out, out of my home also. And, and I'm grateful for it. And I, I want everybody, anybody watching and listening to this to know that, that, that this board is appreciative of it. And there's a lot of work goes to get to the numbers you're showing us, it takes a lot of work.
Yes, yes.
It sure does, and I'm just, I'm just happy that we continue to trend in a positive direction. You know, that doesn't, it doesn't always happen. Sometimes you can have a really good growth year and then not so good and, but we're seeing gains at all of our schools in many areas, not just academics. So I'm proud of them as well, they work hard.
The most important element is that you're asking the question, why? Over and over and over. There's no manufacturing adage, to get to the root cause, you ask why five times. And.
That's part of our problem solving process.
And asking why, I keep on seeing that as a recurring theme. You're, you're completely untracked to get to the root cause of driving behaviors and.
And early intervention, which I think all of our schools.
Oh, I had one more thing, I, I'm glad to see the CTE stuff in there. Because you know, from a teaching standpoint in a high school, I would see students that would struggle on standardized testing. It was no secret. And they could come in there and they could earn that credential. A lot of them, because they, they could excel, they, they found their nick, they found something they liked. And so, you know, even in the credentialing data we got from CTE, you've probably got students that maybe struggled on some of this testing. But yet they find their, their lane and they excel in it.
Have that application piece instead of just reading piece, that they can read things on a college level that's flexible. In some of the manuals, but they can't sit for four hours and do a test that's not relevant to them.
Right.
Okay.
Great job, great report.
Thank you.
One more thing to vote on.
And you do need action on this, correct?
No, I do not need action on that.
Okay, all right. All right, we'll recognize you now. The revised district strategic plan.
Yes.
And school improvement plans.
Yes. About three or four weeks ago, I provided you with copies of all of the school improvement plans as they were submitted to me. And you can always go on their websites and see any updates because they are a living document. So I have asked you all to review two or three more if you felt so compelled. So now that you have had an opportunity to review those, would you entertain a vote to accept them, please? We'll have to do the strategic plan separately.
What's the pleasure of the board?
They should approve.
Second.
Motion by Board Member Ryan, second by Board Member Reese. Is there any other discussion on these plans? If not, all those in favor for the approval of the school improvement plan, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Plans carry.
Okay, and with the strategic plan, last month I presented to you the findings on the strategic plan and how we were able to quantify that data. These, what you got most recently are the revisions to the school improvement plan based on that data and with a few additions in the goals. So I would ask you to vote to accept that also or ask any questions if you need to.
Any questions to these updates to the strategic plan? What's the pleasure of the board for the adoption of the school, excuse me, the strategic plan updates?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Board Member McLean, second by Board Member Agüez. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor of the approval of the strategic plan update, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Updates pass.
Thank you.
Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, board members, at this time, per North Carolina General Statute 143318.11A6, do we have a motion to enter into closed session?
Make a motion.
Got a motion by Board Member Dagenhart, second by Board Member McLean. All those in favor of entering into closed session, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're in closed session.